Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Cape School Board Candidate Forum. Cape is an independent citizens group that supports and advocates for quality public education in Lake Mills as evidenced by the quality of our teachers, our facilities, and our programs. Cape does not support a political party or individual political candidates. My name is Pam Strike and I will serve as the moderator this morning. I had the honor of serving as the administrator, as an administrator, in the Lake Mills Area School District for 20 years in multiple capacities, including district administrator. It was during those years that I truly came to understand, advocate, and respect the tremendous commitment and responsibility school board members bear. In the end, an outstanding school board creates outstanding schools. Full disclosure, I did not meet any of you until this evening, and I have intentionally not read any of your campaign materials or statements so that I may remain as neutral as possible this evening. We will follow a very concise schedule this evening to be fair to all candidates. I will be monitoring the time, and the time will also be displayed on this screen. And I will interrupt your statements if you extend beyond the time allotted or if your response has not addressed the provided question. We will rotate the first responder to each question. Thank you all for being here this evening and for your interest in creating outstanding schools in Lake Mills. Let's start with two-minute introductions. Please include your connections to Lake Mills, area school district, community groups that you might be involved in, and your perspective on the role of school board members. Let's start with Andrea Graham.
Hello, thank you for hosting the forum tonight. I am a proud member of Cape, Madison Teachers Incorporated, and the Wisconsin Education Association, and I really appreciate your advocacy for public schools. I come to this contest tonight as the parent of two children who attend Lake Mills Elementary. I am also a caring professional. I'm currently in my 14th year of teaching elementary school, and this is my ninth year teaching second grade. I am a certified English language learner teacher, and I'm also working toward my library media science certification at UW-Whitewater. My family and I have lived in Lake Mills for 13 years, and this is our home. We love this community, and I am happy to raise my family here. I really feel that my voice on the school board would be of great service. My purpose in wanting to serve on the school board is to continue delivering high-quality educational services with small class sizes, to ensure that our workforce feels valued so that we attract and retain the best teachers, and to improve school climate and instruction so that every student is supported during their time with us. I will proactively work to foster understanding and respect on our board and within our school district and community. I would be an effective -- oh, my goodness, this is buzzy. I would be an effective member of the school board because my passion is education. My whole career is dedicated to standards, pedagogies, and systems that run our schools. I'm an effective collaborator, an active learner, and a person of integrity who will bring passion and caring to this service. Finally, my role on the board is to support the professionals within the school district so that we, as a community, can educate our children for the future. I would provide support as a board member by listening, advocating, questioning, and bringing together people and ideas for the good of our students. I also see the role of a board member as a leader in education. I would look to advocate for best practices in our instruction, equity in our classroom walls, and a fight for fair and sufficient funding for our students and district needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Maureen Kennedy Belter.
Thank you. I'll open with a quote from a voter who reached out to me recently. She said, "Even though I don't have children in the district anymore, I believe it is my duty to encourage those who are qualified and able to meet the needs of our city, state, and county." School boards are a very important part of that. They impact one of our greatest assets, our children. I pray this country, including our schools, will one day get back to the principles and values our country was founded on. Many people I have talked to echo her sentiments. That is why I'm running for the Lake Mills School Board. The board's job is to make sure the district is run well. The school board is responsible for establishing goals, setting policy, and overseeing resources for the school district. I'm running to promote the same principles and values of the woman who reached out to me. First is the value of freedom of speech, not the value of canceling the person whose speech offends you. Second is the value of individual rights, everyone's individual rights, not special rights, not rights that are suspended during certain times. I believe in the traditional American value of achievement, not the value of aggrievement. If any of these statements cause you to label me one of them, then I ask, what are your values? I believe you and I share more values than you think. We need to strengthen our common bonds and build on them. Today, I believe there are forces working not only to undermine some basic values we share, but also to turn us against each other, sometimes in very vicious ways. As a member of the Lake Mills School Board, I will fight to eliminate forces from outside or within the community which promulgate divisiveness or fear. If our board is united on principles and values the community shares, we can accomplish great academic achievement for every one of our students.
Thank you. Our next candidate that will be on the screen is Kirk Lund.
My name is Kirk Lund. I have lived in Lake Mills for 10 years. I'm married and a parent of one child attending the Lake Mills Public Schools. I have represented the west side of the city of Lake Mills on the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors for nearly eight years. I'm an attorney and I own a small handyman business. I've gotten to know many people in Lake Mills through doing projects on their homes. I'm also the general manager and a player for the Lake Mills Grace based on law. I attended and graduated from a public school district. I have a BA cum laude in history and political science from St. Olaf College and a JD from the City University of New York School of Law. CUNY Law is a public law school focused on training lawyers to work for the public interest. I'm running for school board because I believe in public education and care about our community's young people. I believe public education serves the common good. If public schools are weakened, society is weakened, and the most vulnerable people are most hurt. The most important measure of a society is how it treats its most vulnerable members. I want to serve on the school board to protect and champion public education and to ensure that every district student, regardless of post-graduation plans, race, ethnicity, or economic status, and whether or not they receive special education services, has a high-quality educational opportunity to help them reach their full potential. A school board member has two primary responsibilities. First, to work with administrators and teachers to provide a high-quality educational experience for all district students; and second, to be the important bridge between parents and the district. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sheena Wiedenfeld.
Hi, I'm Sheena Wiedenfeld. I have been in Lake Mills for about 11 years. I married Andrew Wiedenfeld, who is the son of Jay Wiedenfeld. They've had a farm family in the Lake Mills community for many generations. I'm a proud wife and parent to two children that are Lake Mills students. One is a second grader, Ms. Sila, and then Zaylee is a three-case student. My background includes an MBA, a master's in business administration, and then currently in residency and internships of finishing up my clinical mental health counseling, specializing in child trauma and occupational-related traumas. My work currently is a clinic manager for a mental health clinic in the Madison area. In the community, I volunteer as a soccer coach for whatever grade my children are at that time, so right now, second to third graders. And my passion for being, running for school board is I have a passion for school resources. I grew up in a single-parent home, and we had limited money, limited resources, and when my mom moved us to a school district that had more resources available, we were able to succeed despite our poverty level. And I want to ensure that students of all backgrounds have that same opportunity to succeed and leave our schools with academic excellence that they can take into their future plans. My role as a school board member is to first focus on student preparedness and academics, to collaborate with our community members, teachers, students, and parents, and businesses that all have a vested interest in our children's success. I'm also there to support the staff and their needs. My business background is compensation and benefits, manage finances, communicate openly and honestly, and be accountable and transparent.
Thank you. So we'll move into the questions, and for those of you watching us, the candidates all had the questions ahead of time. So our first question tonight is, "As a school board member, what can you do to ensure that all students feel wanted, welcome, and comfortable when they come to the Lake Mills Area School District to learn? What experience do you have in education and working with students?" So we're going to start with Maureen Kennedy Belter.
Okay. As a school board member, I would be one of five people responsible for policies that address how students are treated. Lake Mills has an anti-bullying policy, and it provides a form for filing complaints. The district takes allegations of bullying and harassment seriously. I do, too. If any child expresses feelings of being unwanted, unwelcome, or uncomfortable, I expect teachers would collaborate with parents and administrators on how to address that. No one can control another person's feelings, much less ensure or guarantee a desired state of mind. Teachers and administrators, however, can construct arenas where students experience success, achievement, and pride in their academic work. Acing a test, for example, could go a long way toward making a kid feel good. I spent six years serving on the MATC, that's Madison College now, Foundation Board. I learned about student preparedness, their financial needs, their graduation rates, and their employment rate post-graduation. Not every student needs a four-year college degree to have a rewarding career. Madison College found that some students needed remedial courses before they could proceed with their degree or transfer onto UW-Madison. According to a 2019 report from the UW system, 185 Wisconsin high schools graduated classes where 10% or more of the students starting at UW needed remedial math instructions. Proficiency in math and language arts are critical for any post-high school learning. I have worked with teachers on-call in the Jefferson Middle and High School in both regular and special ed classes. I spent eight years in a private school, eight years in a public school, and I am not a teacher or a member of a teachers' union, and I would not bring any bias to the board on issues related to teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Kirk Lund.
As evidenced by the increasing number of students who are open enrolling in our school district, many students already feel wanted, welcome, and comfortable here. There are other students and families, however, who feel less so. It's important to me that the school board intentionally listen to these students and parents and learn about their experiences. We have to acknowledge that students from marginalized groups may have different experiences in our school district and work to address their concerns and purposely support their success. An important first step I would take is to reach out to these students and parents, to learn from them how the district can help them feel more wanted, welcome, and comfortable, and then work with teachers and administrators to take steps to address their needs. My experiences with education are as a student and as a parent. As a parent in an interracial and neurodiverse family, I know what it is like not to see my daughter's cultures represented in books or in her classroom. My wife and I work hard to advocate for her, and in doing this, we have developed good relationships with teachers and administrators. Our daughter is in special education, and my wife and I regularly collaborate with her teachers and therapists to provide her with quality learning opportunities that best meet her individual needs. Yet I know that not all families may be as comfortable as we are contacting teachers and therapists to share their concerns with the education their student is receiving. I want to use my experiences to help the voices of more parents be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheena Wiedenfeld, same question.
Thank you. So hiring positive staff and teachers is one of the best ways to make students feel welcome, as they are on the front lines and interacting with our students the most, and having policies to support that behavior. Events, programs, and sports that support a variety of interests and are accessible to all our students despite their background will ensure that students feel supported in their interest and welcomed as well. To address the second part of this question, I can't help but think it's geared towards being a teacher, but nonetheless, I will answer. My experience educating students is from an employer perspective. Prior to working in the mental health field, I managed a variety of retail establishments in the area, and hired and managed up to 250 students from the Jefferson County area. For many of these students, I had the pleasure of being their first boss, and I am still in touch with a lot of them today. It was an enriching experience, yet I must admit, I found myself filling in gaps of unpreparedness, some that resulted from public school systems. More and more, we have taken away achievements and honoring those that excel, in fear it would offend other students. But these opportunities are an important lesson, that teach students reward for effort, and acknowledgement is given to those that go above and beyond, all of which are real-world work expectations. So yes, in addition to my business background, I have experienced educating students, but would like to point out that our school district is one of the biggest businesses in town, with business needs that oversees administrators with business backgrounds, so I find that experience of mine to be extremely relevant.
Thank you. And Andrea Graham.
Thank you. My entire career is devoted to the craft of education with a focus on young children. I am constantly guided by a proverb that I once heard. It says, "A child that is not embraced by the village will burn it down to feel its warmth." And I can tell you that this rings true in my second-grade classroom. I work every day with the aim of making every child feel connected, safe, and heard so that they can learn. I also work effectively with their parents. Whether that feedback is positive or requires a more challenging conversation, parents should be respected and embraced as their child's first and most important teacher, and as the community's biggest advocates for public schools. In our role as a school board, there are many things we can do to ensure that all students feel welcome. I think small class sizes are key. Every teacher needs time to attend to the diverse group of kids under their care. Small groups foster a stronger community with classmates. Small class sizes must be a priority. The second is a rigorous dedication to student progress. This means giving teachers the time and staff support they need to prevent kids from falling behind. All students deserve a welcoming and engaging environment with the best teaching strategies possible to keep them moving forward and seeing success. This is how you help kids experience a sense of belonging in school. My third priority comes as a parent as much as an educator. Our school district should raise the standard in offerings. We really need to set an example of what a quality and effective education is. We should try to offer the widest possible programming that helps students get a taste of the world and develop their interests. I want families of every background to be amazed by the array of things that you can get involved in with the Lake Mills School District. Civic engagement, service learning, hands-on environmental sciences, sports, cooking, theater, whatever we can practically do, we should go for it. We need to strive to get every student excited to come to school every day. Our job is to stimulate a sense of possibility and help guide kids on their journey to adulthood. As a board member, I will work with our district administration, teachers, and parents to make our school environment the best possible for student success.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to question number two. "What is your philosophy on teachers and staff as partners and collaborators with district administrators and the board when it comes to decisions that affect them and the students? What do you feel are your leadership responsibilities as a school board member?" For this question, we'll start with Kirk Lund.
I see the school board, administration, and teachers and staff as three independent operators who collaborate in the service of student learning. As the policymaking body, the school board should work with administration and teachers and staff in order to make policies that best provide high-quality educational opportunities for all district students and that best serve student learning. Collaboration and free exchange of ideas is essential. I support elevating and respecting teacher voices to promote excellent classroom instruction and to retain and attract high-quality educators. Not all school board members are educators. Teachers have valuable input that should be a respected source of information and feedback and an integral part of school board decision-making. As a school board member, my leadership responsibilities would include building healthy relationships between school district employees and community members so that we can work together to support the board's effective functioning, using my legal background to research issues that come before the school board, being a prepared and contributing member of school board committees, and helping the board run effective and respectful meetings. Evidence of my ability to take on these leadership roles can be seen in the work I am doing on the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sheena Wiedenfeld.
Thank you. I would first like to point out that parents were left off the list of collaborators in this question. In order to be a collaborator, one needs to collaborate, and that includes all parties involved, and yes, that means parents as well. My interest and reason for running is to help open the lines of communication with everyone in our community so we can properly collaborate and make decisions that are best for our school. My leadership responsibilities as a school board member are to effectively communicate with our community, teachers, students, and school staff to help bring everyone to the table so we can come up with the absolute best solutions. We only limit ourselves when we shut others out. I have a responsibility to be informed, which means meeting with teachers, administrators, and community members, to investigate and analyze the impact of all of our decisions as board members so that we may forecast the results of those decisions, and to be accountable and transparent about every single decision that I make. Thank you.
And Maureen Kennedy Belter.
The district did a good job in reaching out to and involving the community in developing the bones of a five-year strategic plan. The board approved that plan last summer. The plan serves as an overarching framework for all collaboration between teachers, staff, administration, and the board. There is much more work to be done on quantifying the goals within the strategic plan. That will involve setting benchmarks, doing research, incorporating data, and identifying strategies and tactics to reach the goals. My philosophy is to honor the hard work that has been done on the strategic plan and work cooperatively to move forward. I also believe in chain of command. Administrators, teachers, and staff understand the working relationships as far as day-to-day instruction and activities. Periodic reviews of the strategic plan and its goals will affect the day-to-day activities, which in turn will affect the plan. That cycle should be ongoing. Leadership first requires a vision. That vision then requires a plan. Leadership requires accessibility and accountability, and that happens through ongoing two-way communication. Leadership must be well-informed on issues within the scope of work and any new risks and opportunities that arise. Leaders must be flexible to adapt as conditions change and new information is learned. Leaders are responsible for making hard decisions. Board members also have a leadership role in communicating our story to legislators on policy, laws, and regulations that affect education, school funding, and a variety of other issues. Finally, leaders have a responsibility to provide optimism and hope that progress is not only possible but necessary to grow and learn.
Thank you. And I did already mess up the order. So Andrea Graham.
I believe the school board service is a partnership with the district. It also serves to connect the community at large with the educational needs of our kids. Each party has a unique role, and each individual is expected to serve with the utmost commitment and integrity. I will do what it takes to understand the concerns of all stakeholders. Doing this will, of course, involve asking for the views of teachers, and I would also add students as well. If we allow teachers to be heard, then ours will be the district to envy. I would hope that staff feel they can provide candid testimony to the board about needs and opportunities. I will participate as an engaged listener, I will ask informed questions, and I will seek out possible solutions, and be committed to the decisions made. I have the skills for this leadership work, and I will take on this responsibility with thoughtfulness and care.
Thank you. Our next question. "When making decisions for the district, what will be the top three considerations you take into account? How will you ensure you have all the information necessary to be fully informed and be able to consider all of the ripples of each choice before you?" This time, we'll start with Sheena Wiedenfeld.
Thank you. First consideration for me is the budget and financial aspect of the plan being implemented. Second is, can this plan be easily used and implemented by teachers and staff? Is it doable? Third is, what is the return on investment? What do our students academically gain out of this plan or investment? We need to examine the fruit of our labor and not be ashamed or too prideful to do away with techniques or plans that don't work, or are too afraid to try new ones that might work. To be informed, I will do what I have always done: go to the source of a particular topic, research that topic, to understand what impact it's going to have on our district. A good portion of my career is spent forecasting results, and I will continue to use those same skills as my role as a school board member.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrea Graham.
I will take a professional approach to school board service. Of course, reading and preparing for discussions, asking thoughtful questions, listening to others so that our decisions are informed by the best possible information. I will first want to know how the proposal is seen by staff and teachers, as they are the closest to the work and have immense expertise and experience to share. Second, I will look for the impact on our most at-risk or struggling members of our school community, because I believe if it works for the hardest hit, then it will work for all students. Third, I will want to hear the short- and long-term financial impact of each decision, including the role of state funding. I would also be interested to consider solutions and lessons learned from other districts similar to Lake Mills. I also think it's important to look at the history of our school district, looking back on what has worked and what new things we can implement. I will do my homework and seek out additional guidance where needed with each decision.
Thank you. And Kirk Lund, please.
My first consideration would be the effect a decision would have on the most vulnerable students in our school district. Second, the best interest of all the students in the district would be considered. Third consideration would be the fiscal implications of a decision. When making decisions, collaboration and free exchange of ideas is essential. To make sure I have enough knowledge about the topic to make a well-informed decision, I would consult with the following groups of people: Lake Mills Area School District administrators, teachers, and staff; my fellow school board members; parents of district students and other members of the community; the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Resources; the Department of Public Instruction; Wisconsin State statutes; and I would also do my own independent research. I won't have all the answers, but I am committed to learning and to collaborating with others. This is a critical time for public education in our country, and I am dedicated to protecting and improving our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maureen Kennedy Belter.
Thank you. The first consideration is the people in the district. As a board member, I would need to listen to and speak for the community of the Lake Mills School District. The second consideration is the administration, teachers, and staff. How will they be affected by policies and decisions made by the board? The third consideration is federal, state, and local government or political entities of influence. As districts become more dependent on government funding, they are forced to comply with mandates and ideologies imposed in exchange for money received. Our board must work to resist influences from state or national government, groups, and organizations which are not attuned to our local community and seek to impose agendas or philosophies that conflict with local values. Each of the five members of the board bring their own experience and knowledge to bear. Consulting with the other members of the board would be the starting point. We would need to collaborate on what information we have, what we lack, how and how we fill the gaps. For matters regarding administration, teachers, and staff, Dr. Olson does a good job of providing materials and background on agenda topics the board will consider. She encourages the board to ask questions and be informed. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards provides online and in-person education on timely topics and issues. The district provides an orientation for board members on legal considerations also. For issues the board pursues, I expect we would research and explore all information pertinent to making informed and educated decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for our fourth question. "What are your thoughts on curriculum development process and assuring that curricula are culturally responsive and inclusive?" For this question, we'll start with Andrea Graham.
I believe the goal of curriculum is to develop skills and knowledge necessary for a democratic society, serving all students regardless of their post-graduation plans. All that we teach must be inclusive of cultural differences. We must allow teachers to use their expertise and skills to adapt instruction where necessary. We should encourage teachers to be authentic and always embrace teachers. We should encourage teachers to be authentic and always embrace teachable moments. Our curriculum should reflect the experiences of our students and provide a window into the lives of those in the wider world. Our curriculum should work for the most vulnerable students. If we can achieve that, then we will have success for all of our students. Curriculum should be reviewed on a regular basis and supplemented or replaced when necessary. I have seen it work best when a committee is charged with overseeing the process, discussing goals, narrowing down choices, and engaging feedback from the wider community of students, teachers, and parents. Ideally, there would also be a pilot phase where teachers may test out possible curricula in the classroom. I also think any curriculum should be based on the body of research and strategies that have been proven to work for students. Thank you.
Next we'll have Maureen Kennedy Belter.
Well, this is an issue that deserves a longer answer than can be given here. The fundamental tenet, as I understand it, of culturally responsive teaching, CRT, is to consider cultures, languages, and life experiences of students and then create student-centered education and instruction to build on those. An article in the March 2020 issue of Education Week stated, "Culturally Responsive Teaching is a Very Timely Topic Brought to the Spotlight by a New Wave of Recognition That the Nation's Schools Have Failed Too Many Students of Color for Far Too Long." Do Lake Mills schools fail students of color? Will CRT guarantee that they will learn better? Is there a common definition of culture? Who defines the culture of another person? Is CRT a solution in search of a problem in our community? Clearly, I have more questions than time permits. Questioning the efficacy of CRT does not make me, does not make me a racist. It makes me want curricula and methods that produce results. Culturally responsive and inclusive can have as many interpretations and executions as there are teachers in our schools. Just as students learn based on their unique individuality, teachers teach based on their own personalities, experiences, biases, and agendas. Curricula has become a flashpoint in the past two years as parents have become more aware. Parents are the ultimate arbiters on their child's education. Teachers are the professionals who work with them to bring their child to his or her fullest potential. We need to have clarity, transparency, and cooperation between both groups in developing the most effective curricula possible for each child in our schools.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Kirk Lund.
Curricula are developed on many levels, from the Wisconsin academic standards, which served as a model for the academic standards adopted by our school board, to the work of the district's director of curriculum and instruction and that of our teachers. At each level, attention must be given to the inclusivity and representativeness of the curricula in order for us to develop an equitable educational environment for all students in our school district. Doing this does not happen easily, though, because it requires all of us, teachers, administrators, the school board, and community members, to move outside of our comfort zones. Thus, it is critical that our school leaders, including the school board, are committed to providing students an unbiased education and dedicated to doing the hard work necessary to reach that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sheena Wiedenfeld.
All right, we have to talk fast. I believe this question is too broad, but I believe culture is best taught by its source and can be incorporated by allowing students to present and share their own cultures to the class and teachers. It is a socially immersive experience that is gained from family values, history, ancestry, peers, religion, holidays, and so many other facets. It has more to do with family than it does with academic education. I fear that if this question implies that teachers are to dial into teaching intimate specifics on another person's culture, that their own values would be imposed and would create room for stereotypes, cultural appropriation, and isolation from curriculum that encourages the labeling and categorizing of students. If a school teaches values that go against a student's family values, it is, it is an insult to their culture. If this question implies a broad understanding and universal acceptance of others, I agree. It's a good one, but it needs to be monitored so we don't offend family values by definitively determining what is for the family to teach and what is appropriate for public schools. Culture is a fluid and changing part of us as we adopt values from our either parents, develop our own, and marry into other cultures. The school, schools should focus on providing resources, resources and access that aid in removing cultural barriers, ensuring that all students, no matter their background, leaves our school academically prepared to succeed, allowing them to incorporate their education into their culture how they see appropriate.
You did it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And question number five. What do you view as the greatest strengths and the greatest challenges of the Lake Mills area school district? We'll begin with Maureen Kennedy Belter.
The greatest strengths in our school district are our neighbors. Lake Mills is a collection of friendly, bright, optimistic, hard-working, and welcoming people. Folks here get along. We have differences, but most people want to find a common ground and move forward. We value learning and spiritual growth. Our new bookstore is a testament to the inquisitive minds and entrepreneurs among us. We have a vibrant downtown, a gorgeous lake, and great neighbors. Our challenges are to maintain or even improve the quality of life we enjoy. Look around. Almost every local business has a sign begging for workers. Our schools need to be producing skilled workers. Jefferson County has fewer working folks now than in previous decades. Couple that with an aging population. If we don't produce skilled workers, we will lose our businesses. I endorse and will support the Heartland Talent Initiative, a pilot program scheduled to launch in Lake Mills schools this spring. It's our county's economic development effort to connect with local area employers to understand the workforce they need and fashion the classroom experience around that. Second, I propose a contract with voters. You can go to my website at moforkids.com to read about it. The contract aims to engage Lake Mills residents and get them to be more aware and involved in school issues. We need to repair the divisions among us caused by federal, state, and county COVID mandates imposed on our schools that were driven more by fear than facts. My contract with taxpayers will guide my term as your school board member. Together, let's make our schools the best they can be at producing productive, fulfilled citizens who live and thrive as free people in the greatest country in the history of the world.
Thank you. Next will be Kirk Lund.
I see the greatest strengths of the Lake Mills area school district as dedicated and caring teachers and staff, growing student enrollment. It's an indication that a school district is providing quality educational opportunities when more families choose to move into the district and send their children to its schools, has a willingness to expand to accommodate growing student enrollment, is consistently graded high on state school district report cards, and has a mill rate lower than the state average, meaning a lower-than-average taxpayer cost while providing high-quality educational opportunities. The challenges to our school district include division in our community, as manifested in the frequent criticisms thrown at public school teachers and the threats to their ability to teach what and how they know best, growing student enrollment, giving rise to classroom space and staffing issues, retaining high-quality teachers and staff, providing high-quality professional development for teachers and staff, and providing high-quality educational opportunities for students who do not plan to go to college after graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Sheena Wiedenfeld. Sorry. Andrea.
All right, we go out of order?
Did I?
I think we're done.
Oh, we're done with that one, sorry. Sorry. I was concentrating on the timer.
No.
Okay.
Okay, never mind, you're right. Yeah, I'm fine. I'm awake, I'm good, I'm here. Yeah. All right, so our greatest strength is how much our community's teachers and business care about our school district. Over the course of the last couple of months, I've gotten to know many community members and have heard many concerns and ideals, all of which are valid and all of which need representation. Our challenge is relinquishing control to allow for proper collaboration with everybody in our community and to gain community involvement in our decision-making. These are student, our students deserve the best, and we need to hear from all the voices in our community in order to have the best for them.
Thank you. And Andrea Graham.
I really think our greatest strength is our reputation for excellence that's been earned by our teachers, staff, and of course, our students. Our schools have really done an amazing job continuing to engage and educate our students through these unprecedented times. Another strength is the pride and confidence that families feel about our schools. More and more people are choosing Lake Mills for their home thanks to our great reputation. Our community support for previous referendums and our community-constructed and adopted strategic plan are all huge assets that will move our district forward. Finally, our district has exceeded expectations on our most recent report card. This is something to be very proud of, particularly with the challenges, challenges of the past two years. We are meeting the needs of the majority of our students, and we are showing improvement in serving those who struggle. I believe our challenges include attracting and retaining staff in a time when the candidate pool is shrinking. We have many retirements, teachers are leaving the field due to burnout and lack of autonomy. There are also fewer people going into teacher preparation programs. This teacher shortage will continue, and we will, we must be bold and creative to figure out how to address it. Another challenge we have is space for our growing community. More and more people are choosing Lake Mills, as I mentioned, and we need space for smaller class sizes so that students can achieve success. Another challenge is dealing with the mental health concerns of students with limited resources and staff. Schools are asked to do very, so much for students' physical and mental health needs in addition to the education that we provide. We need resources and support for the whole child and family. Finally, I would like to see more attention, resources, and professional development paid to developing proficient readers by third grade, as that is a chief benchmark for long-term educational success. We need to reflect on current practices, move to align our reading instruction strategies, and move to align our reading instruction strategies with the body of research that is known as the science of reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone answered that question correctly.
Don't look at me, I shouldn't be in charge of this thing.
Okay. Thank you for your flexibility. And now we're going to have final statements. So thank you for all of your thoughtful responses, and now we will have each of you take two minutes to make a final statement. Please include your main goal for your first year with the board. We will begin with Kirk Lund.
My main goal for my first year on the school board will be to help our district heal from the challenges we have experienced during the last two years. I want to help build bridges among our divided community. Public education should unite us. Our schools need us to work with them to continue providing students with high-quality learning experiences and mental health supports and recruiting and retaining high-quality teachers. We all have important roles to play in supporting the success of the students in our district. One role of parents and community members is to elect school board members who will listen to your concerns and answer your questions, school board members who are committed to working with parents and community members and with teachers and administrators. It is crucial that we all vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheena Wiedenfeld.
All right. So as a school board member, my main goals would be learning loss to address the learning deficits that we've seen over the last two years. That would include using the extra monies and funds responsibly to address those needs, whether it's more reading and writing or a mathematic specialist, to use those resources to, to get our students back to where they need to be and to also gain parent trust. I think there's been some parent mistrust and a little bit of a power struggle with parents in the district for the last two years, and that needs to be repaired so that we, we can properly collaborate, otherwise that, that won't work. We have to repair that relationship. I ran in order to give parents a platform and an avenue to speak and so that they would be represented, and I want to continue to do that and be engaged with the community in order to have concerns and ideas from parents represented in our schools. I have been approached by many political organizations and other organizations for endorsements, and I have denied those and run just kind of solo right now because the only endorsement I, I want is for the parents and community members of Lake Mills. I'm humbled by your support, and I wish you all could have been here. I look forward, look forward to engaging with all of you in, in the future, and if April 5th goes how I planned, I look forward to digging my heels in and working together to make our school district the absolute best.
Thank you. Andrea Graham.
Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight. I am running for this board for kids. I am running for my kids, for your kids, for the students I teach, the students that go to these schools every day, my kids at home right now. I just really believe in the mission of public schools, and I want, sorry. I want to provide every student with the best opportunity to get a good education when they walk into our doors. I truly believe in what we can do for kids in public schools. As a parent, I see the daily impact that talented and caring educators have on our children's lives. The work and impact that our teachers make cannot be understated. It really takes a village to raise our children. I want to unify the village of teachers, administrators, families, and community members. I believe that every family wants and deserves to attend the best schools. I will use my time on the board to lift up the district and the important work of K-12 education in society at large. In my first year, I would expect our, the board and my focus would be to activate the strategic plan. We need to get the referendum to succeed so that we can deliver the best possible learning environments for students and teachers as well. I will tell you that in my role on the school board, if I am voted in, I will do what I do every day, which I go to work and I put the needs of children ahead of everything else. Thank you.
And Maureen Kennedy Belter.
Thank you, CAPE, for hosting the Only Candidate Forum. There are now about 300 CAPE members who know more about us. I hope the word can spread about this video that it exists and that the nearly 4,000 other registered voters might meet the candidates and hear their views on this important school board election. As a Lake Mills school board member, my goal is to improve students' skill in reading, math, and science. While Lake Mills scores on the DPI report card have improved slightly over the past years, they are still short of impressive. COVID masking has eroded language and speech development and has set our early learners back drastically. I want Lake Mills schools to bring, to be among the top academic performers in the state. I want parents to choose our schools because of their excellent reputation. They will do that if they believe the schools reinforce the values and beliefs they learn at home. They will do that if they know the curricula is solid academics from bell to bell. Educational fads or ideologies such as CRT, social emotional learning, SEL, equity programs, and more must be critically examined to understand their goals and the effect they have on students. Do you want your students' advisory time spent filling out surveys on their identities, awareness, intersexuality, sexuality, or feelings? Do we want not for, do we want for-profit organizations collecting data on those feelings and identities? Or do we want them studying Shakespeare, Frederick Douglass, calculus, phonics, spelling, or how to read a tape measure? School board members must listen to the community for these answers. Awareness is the key. When our kids graduate, I want them to be well on the path to a rewarding, fulfilling life work. I want them to say, "What can I do?", not, "Who am I?".
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce Sandy Whistler.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sandy Whistler, president of CAPE, and I want to thank especially our candidates for taking the time to participate in our forum tonight. We appreciate the effort you had to put in to creating concise answers with our two-minute time level, but I think it gave the audience a really good opportunity to meet all of you and hear what you would offer to our Lake Mills school district. Thanks to Pam for serving as our moderator, and to all community members who were watching tonight or who will watch this recording, thank you for your interest in meeting the candidates for our school board, and we invite you to pay attention and be ready to vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Again, thanks, everyone, for attending. Again, thanks, everyone, for attending.